Blocked.
What do you do?
I parked my truck at the corner there and I stood there and like.
Wait.
So the runners were know to go down. I don't know, I may have to help a friend. But I might, what is that Saturday?
Sunday.
Sunday. Send me an email reminder, I got a check. Dolores will tell me.
I was just driving to Brits Lane and I was like, there's something missing.
All right, welcome everyone, it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call the media for order. And we're going to start with a police response ceremony. And John is gonna take part.
I'd just like to introduce our newest officer, Caleb Overe, she comes to us not only with already certified law enforcement experience, but also is already a member of the fast squad in Enfield and the fire department in Enfield, so she has all around first responder experience.
Whereas, there is a vacancy of the office, a police officer in the town of Enfield, and whereas we have confidence in your ability, integrity, performing duties of set office, we do hereby appoint you Caleb Overe as police officer. You Caleb Overe solemnly swear that you faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as a police officer according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations, the constitution, laws, state of New Hampshire.
I do.
Welcome to the town of.
Awesome, we really appreciate your service to the town, Paula, thank you. Because Chief Holland is here, unless there's objection from the board, I'd like to quickly bring one of the business items, the emergency management performance grant approval to the front.
Yes.
If there are no objections, we'll start there, it should only take three minutes hopefully. So this is a grant for $40,000 with a 50% match, so total cost of $80,000. Let you explain quickly what it is.
Sure, so we applied for a emergency management performance grant, which gives us $40,000 to outfit the emergency operations center of the new public safety building. That includes new radio antennas, radio wiring, transferring the radios into the new station, the smart boards. We'll have a state of the art emergency operations center so that, you know, if, when, not if, but when things happen in Enfield where we're ready to capably handle them. The 40,000 match is not something that we have to come up with, it is our in-kind matches, the construction of the building. So that, we more than covered it with $7 million, so. But.
But there's no cash lay out?
No, there's no cash laid on the town, we get $40,000 to equip the EOC and we matched it with $7 million in construction, so.
Excellent, excellent, any comments from the board?
No, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
There's a pretty specific adoption that has to be done for the state as usual.
First, are there any comments on the bullet, questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion and we do have some language.
I make a motion that the select board accept the terms of the emergency management performance grant as presented and the amount of $40,000 for EOC equipment. Furthermore, the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be $80,000 in which the town will be responsible for a 50% match, which is also $40,000.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, do you need the authorized to sign this?
I would put it in.
Okay, can I add that, sorry? And, add an and, and hereby authorize the town manager to sign all documents.
For their designees?
For their designees, okay.
Execute all documents by. Execute all documents.
What I've said. Sorry, sorry about that.
A second?
Second, yes.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
Writing so many grants. So now we will start with a public hearing to discuss a proposed energy product program. This program would be funded using discretionary funds from Enfield Community Power Program and will provide the residents of Enfield free and reduce cost energy audits and or weatherization. Depending upon funding discretionary funds would be raised through a small increase of not more than one half cent per kilowatt hour over the CPCNH Granite Basic Electric Rate. Have a motion to open the public here?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are open, thank you for coming back this evening. I will start with, so for folks who weren't here last time, Kim and the energy committee had put together this, the council had come to this last select board meeting, there were a number of questions. We did get one question answered, which was around creating some sort of account for the monies. And we spoke with legal, our legal counsel, and they came back with a variety of RSAs where you could create an account for it. However, they are all town meeting votes, the select board does not have that authority based on their opinion that we received. So this would involve, so this is definitely the beginning of a process, there won't be decisions made tonight, but this is the first time we really start getting to input into a potential proposal that would go to town meeting, so.
Okay, so the first of a number of public meetings to discuss discretionary funds and what we do with Enfield's community power program. As a reminder, the Enfield Community Power Program was adopted by the town of Enfield residents at town meeting two years ago. And the three main purposes or goal, one was to lower electric costs for everybody. And the second one was to provide more choices in electricity. So Liberty and EverSource default give you any options. And with community power, we can provide options that will give you more green energy. Right now, the options are 23% is the standard amount of green energy that we get in our base rate of default power, and we provide 33%, 50% or up to 100% green energy. So those are the choices that have been available since we first launched and since CPCNH, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, started buying electricity for the town of Enfield. And then the third item that is available to us is to be able to build discretionary funds for Enfield, to do what Enfield, well, this is the have control over your energy and have control over your funds. And so the discretionary funds are to be used for building programs to help, again, save energy in the town of Enfield with things like energy audits or weatherization or other incentives like that. This rate period, the rates are set every six months. And the first two rate periods, it was not possible for any of the towns in the coalition to start collecting discretionary funds. And this upcoming rate period, which is end of June, is the first rate period where we have this option that we as a town of Enfield can start accumulating discretionary funds. And as an example, the program that we briefly outlined, and I'd like to flesh out over time, might be to have to provide audits for anyone in Enfield who wants them and to help people figure out and find ways to reduce their energy cost. And that would be the first step, I think the second step would be to provide some weatherization, free or low cost weatherization, so that can be the second part of the program. So today, as I said, there are four four choices of rates, the lowest rate is the Granite Basic, which currently is at 8.1 cents per kilowatt hour, Granite Plus is at 8.4, the Clean 50 is at 9.4 cents a kilowatt hour, and the Clean 100 is at 12.4 cents a kilowatt hour. Enfield has an opportunity, as do all the other towns in Community Power, to set their own rates. And the committee, I mean, the plan, Enfield's Community Power Plan, has one designated person who always sets that rate, for us, it is the select board, but one speaker, which is our town manager. And so we come to the select board every six months to talk about rates and what they are, and this group makes the final decision. And so far, the final decision has been, let's just take the Granite Basic rate. And so what I want to bring to the public's attention is that we have an opportunity to set an Enfield specific rates. And by doing that, if there's a difference between the Granite Basic rate and the Enfield specific rate, up or down, well, up mostly, but we don't have the opportunity to do less at this point, but we could do a little bit more, then those funds would be collected for Enfield, they would stay at Community Power Coalition until Enfield had a way to accept them and/or, you know, town meeting vote to accept them, that sort of thing. So, so that's where we are. I did a little more, I did some work creating a possible plan, but I think, or we did as a committee, but I think what's more important is to think about what discretionary funds would feel like to an individual. So an average homeowner using 600 kilowatt hours a month, which is pretty typical, I think, for Enfield, that's probably maybe a little high for Enfield, a half cent extra on their bill would be $3 a month. Three tenths of a cent, for instance, would be $1.84 on their monthly bill. So that gives you an idea of what that would be. The other thing that we talked, oh, and I'm sorry, I did want to mention that we have two people here with us that can also answer some questions. Scott Bollinger is the Director of Energy Programs for Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. There's Scott. And Andrew Hatch is the Average Coordinator working for Community Power Coalition also. And so I wanted to recognize them, they've been doing a lot of work on the CPCNH side to allow communities to start creating discretionary funds. And they will be working with each community to help determine what are good uses of that, how much is available, et cetera. Okay, so just to go back for a minute, at a half cent higher than Granite Plus, if the Enfield rate was there, then Enfield's discretionary funds would be growing at approximately $5,500 a month. And so when you think about that, we need probably six months or more to build enough to start a program. So this is the piece of why taking advantage of when we can start discretionary funds is important. When we actually use them can be later. I'll just point that out and we'll talk about that a little bit later. So $5,500 a month, that's a half a cent, it can grow more slowly at a lower rate. And some of the questions that we've had are, as well as where would the funds be collected? What happens if we never get a program off the ground? If we start collecting those funds and then the program fails, nobody wants audits, there's nobody to run it, something happens like that. And that's where we're working with CPCNH to say, first of all, they can hold the money until we actually have a program that the town agrees to. And second of all, we could even have, and I'll look to you, Mark, to explain this, a negative rate. This is where, if we have built up funds that we need to give back to the community, we can have a lower rate than the basic, so that we give that money right back to everybody who's. So this is, this is my pitch tonight is to the select board and the town manager to choose a rate that's perhaps in boundaries, less, a little bit more than Granite Basic. And if things don't work out, there's a fallback. And I just want Mark to speak to that for a moment, from CPCNH's perspective, is that a reasonable fallback if we couldn't get a program off the ground?
Sure, yeah, CPCNH won't really have any say over what you do with the funds, so if you'd like to apply them to reduce everybody's rates, we can do that. And I think in general, there are some benefits to leaving the fund a little bit open in terms of specific uses, as long as there are maybe an array of several different energy related uses. And that's primarily related to IRS tax guidance surrounding some of the federal energy tax credits that are available for some of these projects. We don't need to get into that, but I just thought I'd mention that there is some value to a little bit of potential.
And another thing that I was, as I mentioned, this is the first of public meetings, what we really want to do, the outline of a audit program has been developed, but it's an outline, and I think what we would really like is to have more public feedback as to how best to run that program, exactly how much money we should be giving back and or putting into the audits, things like that. And, and so looking forward to more public meetings and hopefully getting, sitting down as like creating a program, yes, as opposed to presenting a program, which I think has a lot of negativity. So going forward, that's, that's our request, is that maybe we consider discretionary, starting the discretionary funds, but not having, not taking them in to the town until we've had a town meeting vote that says, yes, we can, or no, we shouldn't. And if it's no, we shouldn't, then we give them back through a lower rate.
Just to clarify, it's an energy audit that we refer to?
Yes, did I say that?
Okay.
Well, I said. Okay, energy. Yeah, not a tax.
Any initial comments from the board?
Just to clarify, if we have an Enfield rate, that means the basic rate goes away.
Oh, so, good point, it means it's an additional rate. So there are four rates today.
That's a really key point.
It is a key point, sorry, I didn't mention that. It would be a fifth rate and anyone can opt to a different rate, including going back to Granite Basic or going back to Liberty's Default or whoever, or going up to 100% clean energy, you've got a fifth rate.
Thank you.
But, but what, what this group has to decide is what's the default rate for Enfield's citizens, residents, second thing. Thank you.
Why is the default rate always the basic?
The default rate is what we choose, we could choose a different rate. But that is, we'd have chosen the Granite Basic as the default rate.
But we choose a different rate, but people can still opt to go back to the basic?
Correct.
But they have to make that move.
Correct, just like today, somebody would have.
Automatic.
Correct, just like today, somebody would have to choose to go to 100% renewable.
Or choose to go back to Liberty.
Right. All right, David, so.
I think still any repair can opt out of that system into whatever.
It takes about a month because it has to be the next meter read. But otherwise, yes, you could opt up, down, left and right, any month you want.
Can I also assume that those people with solar systems are still not part of this process?
That is correct today, although we have learned that if you were of the original net metering version one, which was a credit for credit kilowatt hour, you would be fine opting in to community power, but you will not be automatically opted in if you have solar.
So I'll talk to you about that.
Yes, I think your system's a little bit up.
Yeah.
Are you in the future going to need to build something?
That's not.
Like a solar array or something that you come to the town to build and.
Is the question, will we use those discretionary funds for something like a solar array? Does that be a question?
Yes.
I would say that's not out of the question, I mean, it's not on the table today, it's a big project. We're talking about things that are more tangible to everyone, first of all, like. So I would say that's not, not a yes or a no, but it would have to be part of the discussion that we hope a lot of people would be involved, what we should do with those funds. And we certainly wouldn't build a solar array that only provides benefit to a person or a small group. Like, I think the point is to make sure it's beneficial to everyone in the town. That's a big.
What about something like the vault mill, how they use turn that into electricity?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to make a hydro, whatever. No, it's good, it's good to think about anything related to energy, I think.
Thank you.
This isn't a question, but Kim, I wondered if you might just get, share a snapshot, you kind of explained about how New Hampshire saves, which a lot of people have heard of, doesn't always have any funding and how this would, if you want to maybe just give a little snippet of that, that might help explain the plan a little bit better.
Audit plan that we talked about at the last select board meeting, that I think still, it does need more fleshing out, and that would be good to flesh out, is providing energy audits for homeowners. And New Hampshire Saves, as Kim was mentioning, provides some help for audits as well. And one of the problems that we found is that it doesn't always have funding. And you might start going down the path and apply for it and then find out that there's no money left. And so this gives us the control to say, we know exactly how much money is in the account, we know exactly how many energy audits we can do, and if we save, keep saving the money, we can keep doing more audits. We are in complete control of those funds instead of Liberty or EverSource being a. And maybe Andrew, you could speak to that because you used to be on that side doing these interesting things.
Yes, yes, good evening, everybody. I think something also to add is that, in my understanding, there isn't anything that would be an either or conversation, but you have to save, it could be in additions and you have to save. So certain income eligible customers may qualify for a free audit, others may have to pay. It could be that these funds could all meant you have to save a program, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we would definitely want to work with any grants or free money or New Hampshire Saves money along with this to.
Working.
It's definitely wants to work.
Yes.
Yeah, you definitely.
I heard safety program, right.
Yes, yes. Go back and forth, that we would want to work with anybody locally that could help Enfield residents.
But it's not known to everybody, but the New Hampshire Saves program does actually fund energy assistance and those cap programs. So it's all part of the same.
Thank you.
Charlie, I think I see your hand up, unmute yourself and add your comment or ask your question.
Yes, I've got a question for Andrew, Liberty Utility had the same program when he was still working for them. Is this still in existence and what's the advantage of starting a second fund if Liberty are doing this?
Good evening, Charlie. Well, the New Hampshire Saves program is the program you're referring. It's administered through the utilities that serve different communities. Obviously Liberty is the largest utility providing energy to Enfield, but if you were an EverSource customer, you would be eligible as well. So it is the same program as we're just talking about right now. It is in existence. We've got commercial and residential programs to run separately, so it's all, it's all part of the same thing.
Yeah, I've used the program and it worked quite well, so I'm not seeing the need for a second program duplicating what Liberty already does.
Well, what Kim's saying is that it isn't necessarily fully funded and there's typically always over subscription of the residential program. So the program opens on January the first, but it immediately closes because they've got a backlog of applicants that are lined up already.
Charlie, I've had, this is Alice, I've had a different experience, I've been on New Hampshire Saves list for three years. And sometimes the waiting list is too long and sometimes they tell me they don't have funding that year.
So, so this would even all that out and make sure we know what our funding is and provide it.
And, and I'll make a comment on my experience in New Hampshire Saves, it was also very good, it helped us out. But one of the things where a local program, one of the flaws that the local program could address is the applications to New Hampshire Saves have to be in the name of the person who has the electric meter, which for many tenants is not the owner of the property. And so there's sort of unmatched incentives where the owner, the person whose name was on the meter, the tenant has to sign up for, to pay the matching funds. But of course, the landlord is the one who controls the property. And so there's, there's a mismatch there between the need and the incentives, and it makes it very complicated for landlords to improve the energy efficiency of their buildings. And so there's, there's potential there for a local program to sort of address that flaw, the Hampshire Saves program as well. Other comments or questions?
So can I just ask if the select board would consider starting the discretionary funds at some rate that's always going to ensure less than the default rate of Liberty, so it's still saving money? That's the number one goal for all of our residents. And it just adds another rate, which is the number two goal, having choices. And then the number three goal is a year away or more than half a year away in where we will have public meetings and we'll, we'll create a program that, that can be approved at town meeting or can be reviewed and discussed and hopefully voted on at town meeting. That's my.
To the board, I would, you have opinions?
Yeah, so I think this program is a fabulous program, I'm really excited about it. I get very nervous about doing things that are supposed to go to town meeting before we actually go to town meeting. I think there are a lot of people in this town have some pretty strong feelings about whether they get input on stuff. And they raise a pretty big ruckus, even when they don't legally have inputs. So I feel like this is one where the court of public, I think, will be a pretty big challenge. I guess I'm, I would like to hear from folks, you know, our constituents about it. I don't know, I don't quite understand, I know that you were saying we could leave the money with CPCNH, but that kind of to me, you know, instead of having, it just makes me nervous that we're trying to circumvent the law. So I, I'm kind of stuck there, I guess.
So John, do you have a?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the fact that people will have to opt back into the basic. I think that should always be the fundamental beginning. And in fact, right now, I, I have concern whether I would be in favor.
Alice?
No, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about the program, but I do feel awkward accepting money that we haven't had enough to really to create a fund that has to.
So that'll ask the public that's here online, do you have any input or comments on that question?
I really appreciate Kate's consideration. I think this is likely a good program, but I believe that we just got started as citizens in this program and we have one understanding of it and then to have a switch where, oh, well, now you're going to pay a little bit more, even if it's a small amount, without it being settled, that people, unless it's like, you can, John, what you said, you can pay a little bit more now if you want to and it will go into this fund. And then it will, as this fund goes, as we go forward, when we get to town meeting, we can discuss this form and decide if everybody wants to do this. That part I would agree with, versus just an arbitrary moment, by the way.
Actually, I forgot to encourage people to say their names.
The only thing that I'm still confused about, and I think, you know, people would be more accepting, is that if, if this goes through, things start, my rate would stay the same and I would have to opt into this, not be, not have to back out of it or go back to Granite Basic. If I, you know, I think that would sell better people if they, they said, okay, so, you know, I get a choice now, I can give these guys three bucks a month or whatever it is, or I can decide not to, not giving the three bucks and then helping them back down to, to the previous rate to make that decision. That's why I want to say, I mean, well, it's fairly easy, it is a little bit of a pain getting in there and making the, the switch, you know, and I had to talk to somebody on the phone, it's like, it's automatic as you would think of it being, you know. And nothing against that, I think they've done a great job, the rates are all super, you know, the thing really works well. But I think opting in would be. You know, the thing really works well, but I I think opting in would be better than in and then off out.
So you're basically agreeing with me, are you?
I try not to, as I can, but it's it's we seem to be on the same page.
Actually, so can can I maybe suggest, even though nobody will opt in, but that's the problem. But could we, and this is also a question for CBCNH, create the rate now and only have it optioned?
I think that's an interesting compromise. I wrote down a similar note to myself just now. I think you're right. I don't think many people are going to opt in, but then it's they as an individual did it and we're not trying to circumvent town meeting and then go to town meeting.
Yeah, complimentary question. Could we, if it's going to be a purely opt in to start, can it be an opt in for all their, like somebody just doing a hundred percent renewable energy is probably not going to opt into this program because it results in less renewable energy for them. Is there a path for not a new rate, but like a plus up?
An adder.
If that makes sense?
Not this rate.
Yeah, we've decided to limit it to one new product.
Okay.
Per community.
I guess I'd love to be an adder, like, you know, instead of having it be a new product, that'd be an adder. Situation.
Another rate.
We may eventually get there, but we're not quite prepared to do it.
I look at this from sort of the opposite end of this, creating a funding pool without details about what the program is being funded by that funding pool that raised or sustained. I'd like to see more details about that, you know, where that would be going for. I would be surprised.
I would like to just add that I think having funds available to this community or energy projects is something that we could all benefit by. For instance, it's a possibility of having, putting together another solar array of one of the newer buildings. And that could be supported through this. And I think what Martin said just earlier is keeping it kind of open. Thank you. And I think getting too specific could be detrimental. But that's part of the way I look at life anyway, so.
Are there comments or questions, concerns, statements? Yeah, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so discussion of the board. Is there anything new or action that somebody would like to propose? Okay, I think this is a really nice discussion to start. I think we got a little bit more, I think. Certainly, I think this board is hesitant to create a new product without the town meeting vote at this point. It's sort of where we are. That's fair to say.
I think so, especially, you know, people's electric bills is always a sore point. So we need to tread cautiously in whatever we do.
Okay, so thank you, Emily, Joel and and Kim. This is a good start. I do think there's we're on a good path to propose something at town meeting. I will say for all the public here, please pay attention. Not not every time this is necessarily on the agenda will it be a true well, it'll always be public, but it won't be a public hearing formally. So please pay attention to the agenda as it goes forward. But there will be, as with most things that go on the town meeting, there are public hearings associated with those at the end of the process. But if you want to be involved during the process, you have to be involved in the next six weeks. Yes, yes. The energy committee meetings are going to be the primary place where a lot of this discussion happens.
In the fourth, fourth Tuesday, fourth Tuesday, and we're looking for members that want to create programs. So join us.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, John, for for attending. Appreciate that a lot. Okay, approval of minutes, June 3, 2024, regular and non-public sessions.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, please.
To approve as presented?
I'll second that.
Are there any discussion or corrections of ours?
At one minutes as always.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved and the non-public minutes will become public.
I think they are public at least seventy two hours.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. That's right.
That's what I see.
Yeah.
Now they're official.
Yes, now they're, yeah. But I do like to say, because it's important to to make that distinction while you're doing it. Okay, board reports. Alice, were you interested? Okay, the planning board has not met since our last select board meeting either, but we will meet next next week. So I have nothing to report.
Gosh, I went to a meeting. I might punt over to Shirley. I think we have a new member, so we welcomed our new member. And that was a portion of the evening. And then we took a look at the website as well because there are some trail volunteer forms and things. Now a lot more accessible. So that I think was pretty well received. Do you want to add anything?
And we had two of the members that volunteered to help.
Yes, yeah.
Craig is very happy. Yeah, I think they have come in and, if necessary, they will work with.
Are they commission members?
Yes.
As commission members, they don't have to fill out volunteer forms? They can still sign in on the day because they were already volunteers.
That's a good point. Yeah, so and then there was some discussion on upcoming events. So in particular, old home days and about how they could get the information out. And thank you to Lisa for posting. It looked great. I saw it via text to be at email and it looks like working great. And if you guys haven't signed up for text alerts for Conservation Commission, you don't want to miss out. Look at me, just you can sign up for every committee. I just had to.
We have old home days, a presentation on Saturday.
Town managers report.
I want to start following up. As Kate said, with our new website, if you've signed up for alerts before, you can sign up for text alerts now. If you'd like to get text alerts on news items, emergencies, anything that's on our list. So good thing to to get back in, look at, if you haven't signed up for Code Red, I'd also recommend signing up for that. It's an emergency alert through the phone system where we can direct call people of certain areas of town. So it's a nice thing to sign up for, but you do have to sign up for it. It's not something that we automatically can push for cell phones. We can push landlines. We have those, but sign up for cell phones. And if we have water outages and stuff like we did last year, you might get a direct phone call letting you know that the water's on. So little ways that we can help communicate, but we need your assistance to be able to do that. From a staff report, we welcome Kayla tonight and the new building inspector, I'll go ahead and say his name, Vincent Percy is going to be starting with us next Monday. So we're going to have one week without Liam. But I do want to thank Liam for his time. He's he's working for TENS now, so he's opted and volunteered to come back, not volunteer, we're going to pay him, but he volunteered to come back on his days off on Fridays for the next two weeks. One, this week to keep things moving and next week to help with the training cycle. Vincent does come to us from the city of Claremont where he's the building inspector and health officer now. So he does have some training and he's been working in this field for a little over a year. So it's nice to get someone that could have to learn in field a little bit, hit the ground running and be able to to keep things moving along. So I'd like to welcome Vincent to staff and I'll bring him maybe at the next meeting just to to say hi. So as of next Monday, when Vincent starts, we will be fully staffed. Nice to say. The updates on Whitney Hall and Public Safety Building. Whitney Hall continues to to move along well, is making good progress. Roughen plumbing is complete and final details are being done on rough in electrical and rough in HVAC. They're also installing right now the new fire sprinkler system. And if you drove by today, you saw that they are working and replacing the roof. So a lot of work still happening in that building. I think they're are moving along well. Public Safety Building is, I'm going to say on the lightning fast, if you haven't been watching that one, but last Monday, they dropped off equipment Thursday afternoon when I was there for my meeting about one o'clock, the subgrade inspector was there. And they've already installed half of the footing drains and they're getting ready to start the forms. So by the time we have our open house, Monday, the twenty fourth, at five o'clock, our grand opening or groundbreaking, whatever you want to call it, there, they may be getting really close to pouring concrete. So those guys are moving fast. If you drive by, you can start to see the slope and grade of the driveway for the fire apparatus they've cut in. So background's taking shape very quickly. As you guys know, it's going to be pretty warm this week. So we've been putting a little work into cooling shelters. What we've planned for this week is the police station and DPW building during the day will be cooling stations. Of course, you can come to any public building, but I lost it. We don't have much for air conditioning right now, but you're welcome to come in. But the police station, they have their little meeting room and DPW, they can put people in here during the day. It does appear, looking at weather apps and different weather stations, that it's going to come down quite a bit at night. So we think during the day is when we're really going to need it. And then if we get enough people and think we need it, we'll open the community building. Once we do open the community building, we have to dedicate staff to that. So we thought using the buildings we had open with staff and up now is the best year of setup. That's what we'll be doing for this weekend. We'll be putting announcements out on the the board and listen to the different places on how that'll work.
Does the level we have, you see?
They do have some. You can go in there, but they don't really have a place for people just to hang out in there. There's a table, but
It's a data check.
A little small right now, but yeah, like I said, they can go to any public building and they're they're hot and need to cool down. We'll do what we can to do that, help get them a drink of water, those types of things. Take them a ride to somewhere with more cooling, we'll be back. Wanted to give you an update on the reevaluation that's going on. We're planning on sending out impact notices in mid-July with a plan to conduct hearings in August. So that's just kind of where we're at. We're still working on some paper and we had a little bit of computer issues, but we're hoping it may July. We have it on the agenda today, but I will go through it pretty quick, but we're still working on the veterans tax exemption that we've been talking about. We've reached out for more information from the person that applied and we have not heard anything back. We're going to continue trying to do that, but in reading the law, it looks like it needs to be a ninety day period that they're active duty, not ninety days total through their service time. So I believe that then writing down zero active duty was correct and probably just not qualified. But we don't hear anything more by next meeting, we'll go ahead and deny that or ask you to deny that plan. And they can always reapply and have some other connection. Askoma Lakeside Park, if you guys have been by there, there's a lot of stuff going on. Sorry for John, a lot of people barking when they're not supposed to bark, but.
I've been getting a lot of.
But yeah, no, it's.
I'm telling them all to call the police department.
Definitely busy. If you have an immediate issue, call the police department. They can come down and do something with it. The paving company was there today. They paved the sidewalk. They're supposed to be back tomorrow after they've the marking lots. So we'll be putting on the finishing touches on the marking area this week. And then the trees were delivered today and starting to be planted for the landscaping, which was a big part of landscaping project. There's a lot of little shrubs coming later this week, but the parts really starting to come together. And again, should be done in the next week or two. I'd say by the beginning of July, it'll be completely done, but by the end of this week, the parking lot should be good. It should be good, but there's that here should be bigger seven. If nothing else, they can run down the sidewalk now, so.
Are they, like the trees that they got delivered today, they have been really watering them?
They are still working on watering them. I've been putting on a lot of plant watering them. They are putting water bags on every tree, so it'll be continuous.
I know they have to keep working. It's just like least ideal to put a tree.
I was on the phone with the fire chief this afternoon saying, if I can't get a DPW water truck down there, can we get a fire truck down there to make sure that we're watering?
I have a trash pump you can use.
But we have a couple pumps all on the lake, but I want to make sure we can get water there easily and be able to water a large area in a small amount of time. I'm not as worried about the shrubs. They will need to be watered, but the trees are are big, so. Yeah, not the greatest need to be planting trees, but the ones they did go in today, we watered and you've seen them burn right up. So if we can keep some water on, they'll be.
Could you explain to me what the impact statements are?
I think that's just the letters out that here's what your evaluation is.
That's the one that makes everybody else sad.
That's the impact, yes.
Sorry, but.
Short police department update. The only thing I really have since we did Kayla already is that Federico started the academy this week. So nice to see him go into the academy and we're excited to get everybody on staff being able to to work. Kayla is in field training for a few weeks. She passes that, but as soon as she passes our field training, then she'll be beyond her bounds. I wanted to let you know that two appeals have been received for the Laramie Barnes project. There will be a hearing tomorrow over the zoning board. It's not really a public hearing. It's for the board to come together, discuss the appeals, discuss them and decide their action. Both appeals at this point are for the EPA to kind of review their actions. And then if they decide not to do anything, then the appeals can move forward if the people want them to take a superior order of the housing board.
Do you know what they were based on? I'm just curious.
I know one of them was based on property values, possibly going down. They'll be looking at them. We have, I won't I'll give you the results of that, but I have worked with Rob and we sent those through our zoning attorney to review the appeals and work with the zoning board. I just want to reiterate, I said this at the last meeting, that public or paving is scheduled for early summer with the following streets being paved, Eastman Hill, Even Chance, Methodist Hill, Route Ten, Rice Road, which is just a little section of it. It's not been paved before, but it's getting washed out all the time. So we thought it'd be best if we paved that first little section and then Good Hill, Good U Hill. And then just another reminder that DOT is paving Main Street and Shaker Hill Road this year. Lot of paving going on. As brought to my attention, Oak Grove has been reduced to one lane at this time. If you go through there, there's some erosion, the guardrails are starting to lean. It is something we do have been voting and we added it to the TIF plan this last year as ways to possibly engineer and look at that. With the use of TIF funds to help pay for that. We don't have any real plans at this time. We are looking at some engineering right now for long term plans. And Jim Taylor and Jeremy Clay are talking through a few different short term plan ideas that we may be able to do fairly quickly just to keep it safe. So with that, we may be back to the select board to talk through a couple options and see what on the end. As of right now, it's there's some Jersey Bears out there just keeping people away from that that side. That's a little risky. Shaker Boulevard Bridge back open, though you may see some surveyors and people still in the area. I know I saw some this morning when I went through, but last week it was closed for the drilling rigs to be able to do some boring samples and stuff around here. The sidewalk plowing machine RFP has been opened. We thought we were going to bring this to you at this meeting, but DPW wants to take a little bit more time going through the bids. We didn't bid a specific machine this time. We didn't bid a specific machine this time. We went out kind of with what we're looking for and like companies give us different ideas. And so they want to take a little bit more time looking at costs and the different machines to pick the best one for the town. And then just another reminder, the community building floor refinishing is scheduled for August fifth. And that's my report.
Okay, questions for Brett?
Um, yeah, um, on the community building floor refinishing, there are a number of folks who have access. And I'm curious, are we planning on making it so they can't get in? I'm going to say that people locally will like climb over a large piece of furniture to access the floor. So you have to, you have to have them duly locked out. I've done it before and it's ridiculous sometimes what people will do. You're like, if there's sign, there's giant piece of furniture, you can't get through. Don't climb over it. I know, isn't it? Yep, I'm just thinking that somebody will eminently have to go to the bathroom, let themselves in and walk across your beautiful floor. I wish I, I wish these weren't things.
For the weekend, if there's like heavy equipment and stuff that's like in the park and you just ask them to like tuck it away in your hair.
I can ask them, like I said, if they need to, we'll just route them along the new sidewalk that's on the side.
Yeah, just like a clear, obvious, this is the clear path.
Now, it could be an obstacle course and be like.
I'll go look at it, but we may actually want to route them down the sidewalk. It's a five foot wide paved sidewalk, so it's plenty wide for runners to go through. But yeah, I can look at that. I'm guessing they're going to have everything out of here by this weekend.
I love that guess.
They want, they want to be out of here, so. But I will write it down.
Thank you.
Saying nothing else, we will move on to the business of the evening. Starting with a very introductory discussion of shore septic regulations and stormwater utility. As most people probably know, we're seeing larger and larger rain events, which are having bigger and bigger impacts on stormwater runoff and we're having more and more algal blooms within the lakes, which are having impacts on everybody. So why don't you start us off with what you've initially done?
Yeah, there's, this really came about about a week ago. The, the planning board actually asked the the lakefront districts around Askoma Lakeside or Askoma Lake, Crystal Lake. And we met coming in to talk about zoning regulations and two things really kept coming up from all the lakefront owners based on the cyanobacteria blooms and then the people have been seeing was we've got to do something about septic and we've got to do something about stormwater runoff. And so there's been a couple of things that have been going around, being talked about. I've talked to quite a few people about a couple of these, but the the big one, and I'm going to call it low hanging fruit, is the lake shore septic regulations. The town of Sunapee and it's in your packet if you want to see their regulations. They introduced what they call a health officer regulation, which was not ordinance. It's a regulation from the select board and health officer that requires septic pumping once every three years if you live within the two hundred and fifty foot setback. I don't have the data, but it was talked about at that meeting from some of the people doing some of the water testing that some of the bacteria in the lakes that's starting to be noticed is bacteria that comes from septic systems, so. I'm going to say we know some of the septic systems are leaching in the lake. We don't know exactly which ones at this point, but it's, it's a problem that we need to look at and project I think we should work on and then we can determine how we want to push that forward, whether it's a regulation and ordinance. You know, the teeth behind it, all those different things. I know there's a couple of people here tonight that would like to to speak on that. The other one that I added in is fairly new to the state of New Hampshire. There's actually no cities or towns that are doing this yet, but there's a couple that have been working for a couple of years on them. And what happened is the state of New Hampshire has now allowed what they call a stormwater utility. So it's like a water bill or a super bill, but you can get a stormwater bill at your house for, and there's equations on impervious surface versus how much water is leaving your property. And so I think that's a long-term discussion. It's nothing we're going to solve and be able to implement in the next year or something. But I wanted to bring up the idea, I think this is the I think it's a far reaching impact, but I think there's the way to really impact stormwater runoff in the town is to start doing things to push people to capture their stormwater. Not only, I mean, you know, we have development now, but people are still you'll talk to Liam, they're putting decks on and new sheds in, and these are all more and more and more impervious surface added to the lots. And if you go look at their lots, there's culverts coming down their driveway sometimes or ditches coming down their driveways into culverts at their driveway. And they're just dumping all their water right into the town ditches. And then we have to figure out how to deal with them and the people at the bottom of the road holly drive and that they get to catch it all. And so it's, it's really not fair to the town or the citizens to have to deal with all the stormwater runoff. So there's a few different ways we can do it. I think again, the, the low hanging fruit there is maybe to work with the planning board on the new zoning regulations to start to require stormwater capture as you're building a house, at least then we can say let's stop and mitigate where we're at now and start catching this, not make the problem worse. And then we can look at ways to do some sort of stormwater utility. I've told a lot of people, I'd like to figure out how to do a stormwater utility where it's an incentive and not a punishment and kind of entice people to do the right thing instead of, hey, we're going to, we're going to make you pay this bill unless you do this. But I don't know if the state of New Hampshire lets you do that, so it might even be a legislative action to to move in the right direction, but I think, I think those are two projects we should be working on. How fast and hard and how much effort we put into each one right now is kind of where I wanted to start this discussion. You know, we only have so much staff time to work on these. I know we have a lot of dedicated volunteers and residents that would be more than happy to help work on these as well. They're really important to a lot of people in town. So I kind of wanted to kick it off. I think the easiest one that maybe even take to town meeting this year would be some sort of septic regulation if we wanted to look at that. Sunapee did highly recommend if you were going to push something forward, that you stay within that two hundred and fifty foot buffer around the lakes, at least to start the program. And so just wanted to bring it forward for that real introductory discussion. I did call Dan Regan and Bob Cusack, who will talk to me outside of those meetings about needing that. So I thought they'd be interested in coming and talking and I know Shirley knows a lot for lake health as well.
There are initial questions and comments from the board?
So this is something, both of these are things that Conservation Commission has talked, I'd say, pretty extensively about. We talk about septic and the lake all the time and impacts it has on everyone, not just the folks on the lake quality. Obviously, at the end of the day, people usually listen when it impacts their wallet. So if we ruin the lakes, the rest of the residents are really paying up the bill, right? It's kind of the idea. So we decrease our lake value and ruin our water supply. There's some major impacts, but also there's monetary impacts. We've also talked about the stormwater utility and how the folks from Soak Up The Rain come and meet with and had a talk committee. And so I personally think that start with a low hanging fruit, like Ed said, and get the septic regulation on the books. Take it to town meeting if we have to, if we want to do it that way, or get it, get it ordinance in place that we're allowed to do and then flush out the stormwater utility piece because I'm with Ed on that. I think incentivizing the stormwater utility so that it's not punitive. I mean, a lot of people have bought places that you know, maybe in the seventies, somebody did some creative ditching, you did do it yourself. It's kind of a I mean, I've been recipient of some, a significant amount of water that was not mine and it's not fun. So I guess I'd say like backwards on the lake, septic one of them, like see where in the priority stormwater utility fits in. And I know we kind of have our strategy and how we want to go forward. And I think keep safe, the stormwater utility to me is a safety issue, you know, keeping our roads intact, keeping them passable and then obviously keeping people healthy and safe too.
I would agree that I think the septic issue is most pressing. That's something we really need to get on as soon as possible. And because everybody knows it's an issue. And you know, some people could point to six or seven septic systems they know are sort of semi failing. Uh, so we move forward. Tom, man, from the, from, what's your head, Brett?
I think the septic pumping is a great idea, but I also think along with that, you really need a septic inspection. The pumping, which is just going to take care of the, the tank and the, and leach field is what is failing. And so I had mine, actually New Hampshire Lakes, Lakesmart, when they come out with your property, they ask you how long's it been since you've had inspection? So I think the pumping is only half the answer. I think you've got to get the inspection turned up.
Yeah, the town of Enfield has the preeminent expert on septic in the world, right on Crystal Lake, John Esslin. And so you might want to just contact him. See what he thinks about it. I mean, he's, he's, he's a world renowned expert on septic.
Hi, Bob?
Oh, you know, the, the whole idea of us running around and complaining about bacteria blooms, if you look where they are, when they occurred. A lot of the blooms happen in areas that are you know, lower closer to the lake. It was obvious this last year where you had water, you know, two feet above your dog. Then a lot of the places of water, as, as he said, goes into the, the field itself. And then when it goes down, the water just brings out whatever's in the field, whatever hasn't been digested. I, I really think that this should not go to town meeting. I think the board has the duty, it's, it's the help issue. You know, we had guests on last year, they couldn't even, they couldn't use the lake. I mean, it was a, it was a mess. And I, I think for us to really screw around with this thing and, and take it to town meeting, first of all, the, a lot of the people at town meetings that now they might have an economic dog in the fight, the people coming to the town to use the, you know, facilities and stuff. But the people that really have a dog in the fight are the people that live around the lake. And I for one, you know, I, in fact, I am, I'm going to, I'm going to arrange with Starks to do inspections on all, all three of our properties. I think the thing though, it has to have a little bit of beef. This thing, I understand that if you build a home and if, you know, you tear it down, you build one on Lotline. I, I understand that you have to have an inspection, but if it fails, you don't have to do anything about it. So I, I, there's just crazy stuff that we should focus on. And I think the two hundred and fifty foot pole is great. You have a septic, within two fifty, you're enjoying the lake. I think you have a duty to take care of it. As far as, as far as the cost goes, I, I talked to Ed. There's no reason why the town, if somebody can't afford to put in the septic, the town could finance it, put it on the tax bill and have the tax bill go, charge interest on it and become, it becomes part of your tax bill. We have to do something with the septic systems around the lake. There should, there shouldn't even be any disagreement and the people around the lake. If you want to take a vote, have those people vote. I mean, I, I think most people would agree, especially with last year.
We're about condemning the property if it's failing and, and and going into the lake.
Well, you don't stem it.
I mean, who's going to pay the?
What pay what?
It's going to give more things for the town to do. Try and charge, I mean, that sounds like a nightmare trying to get, build a new septic and then charge it on their taxes.
Well, surely, surely did you have a comment?
So that I think they will be able to use the property, the old states. They're no occupancy.
Thank you.
They do that, so.
Yeah, and, and so, and I think Bob had a really good point about how you handle it if they, they can't afford it. We have, not all lake properties are fancy. Some of them are inherited. Some people are full-time residents who do have some financial challenges. But we have a human services department that does financial aid for a variety of things in this town. And I think it's very simple. They know how to route these people. They know how to vet them and you let them handle it and that takes away the financial fees to me at least. I, I don't know if you would feel comfortable sending it through there, but.
There's some, yeah, there's some funding sources. We're helping one person right now.
Yeah.
Through the USDA grant program for a septic system. They're not on the lake, but we're still helping them through that.
So I guess.
There's ways to do it and there's ways that the town could possibly set up grant funds or with grant funds, set up a fund to help with that kind of stuff.
And I guess that's where I, and I'm thinking about that situation in particular, but there are times that someone develops a property and they never put a septic in or they, they do tear it down like Bob said, and they have a tank in the ground. If you pay cash or you inherited it, right? There's no requirement to have an inspection or have a working septic. How do we, like, so I'm going to tell you guys, like, I bought my broken farmhouse and I knew what I had for a septic based on what I had an experience with it years ago. What we found out was somebody did something creative on the way, super bad. And so our septic failed during COVID, like somebody and just got money. But I think there was, because we paid, basically paid cash for a very broken house. There was no legal requirement to have a septic inspection at all. So I guess one of my questions would be, is there a mechanism by which? And maybe we have to do an immediate ordinance and then something that goes to town meeting to give it more teeth. Is there a way we can say in Enfield, if you are within two hundred and fifty feet of the lake, you have to have an inspection to transfer your home. I don't care if you have one point five million dollars in cash, you still have to do it.
And I'll, I'll just come in. So one of the key things for everyone to understand based from Bob's comments is there's a couple of different ways that a potential rule could go in. Sunapee implemented a health order, which is implemented by the select board. Another option would be to do a town ordinance, which are adopted at town meetings. So a couple of paths depending on the reasons behind the rules and how you choose to do it. Well, it's just coming, I remember the Valley News article from last summer where they were commenting about, well, they wrote an article on the algal blooms in many lakes throughout the region and Lake Sunapee was the only lake that did not have algal blooms. So perhaps it's anecdotal, but, but after last summer, there was some, some evidence that what they're doing is being effective for their lake.
Here, in touch with the state now, after seeing what the place possibly be of, of role that, that Johnson main property.
Okay.
So it's, it's likely starting.
It's early in the season. Yeah, that's right.
I, I think the, the idea of, of the people, if it is a financial problem, which I think very rarely for financial problems around the lake. But of adding it to the taxes is a good idea because I think so, I think sometimes they're, they're just unconcerned. It's why they have their own septic system. And unfortunately, it may have changed a little from after last summer. But a few years ago, I broke with, well, Glenn and I did, and with the help of the S O R shed management plan. And you'd be surprised at how many people, the residents were against it because they didn't want that regulation. Want them and they're the ones, most of them that are causing.
But I will say in the planning board members that were at that meeting, I I think we can honestly say times have changed. That whole meeting was packed in here. think we can honestly say times have changed. That whole meeting was packed in here, it was standing room only, and the theme of that night was make sure we have the proper regulations and don't let them sort of, they came through loud and clear to me.
Dan?
I just wanted to add, I really came away from that meeting, I think, the planning board, I think was really surprised that we wanted regulations. And, uh, and it was so good that they found out because it's actually monitored, really thought that should make it easier, you know, enough people not have to go for, or, uh, variances. It should be a lot easier than, than shouldn't. It's already too easy.
I did read, um, so a couple of thoughts. Yeah, I was at that meeting last Tuesday and there were 75 people in this room and 25 online. There were more at that meeting than there were for Larry's. Uh, it was really pretty amazing. Um, the second thing I want to mention is I agree with what Bob said. Uh, this is, this is serious. It's not just a nuisance. Uh, the cyanobacteria, it's, uh, in its own phase. It causes skin rashes, respiratory problems, uh, it causes other serious things. Um, in a long term, there's an association that says it may related to ALS or malaria disease. It's an association. I haven't seen anything, send us a defender, but it's an association. So this is a public health concern as I see it. Um, and I would be strongly in favor of asking the select board respectfully to consider moving on rather than leading to public meeting. I think we need to keep it simple, keep it to septic at this point. Then down the road, some of the other ideas that are being offered, I think are well worth opening up to the entire town and saying, hey, if we're gone, what do people think about this? Um, the other thing I mentioned, I was at the, uh, New Hampshire Lakes meeting, uh, which was held last Thursday. Uh, and there's a number of folks there that have implemented programs like this. Sunape is, I think, the best example, but there are others. It's becoming more and more, uh, something that we want to do, but we are seeing this cyanobacteria around the, uh, around the state. Um, and, and some of the people that I spoke with, they mentioned that is financial assistance if you apply for the right grants, the 319 grant coming out. There's, uh, other grants for if you implement a project like this to make funds available, the focus of the system that had failed. So want that to, to stand in our way. That would happen. Wow. So I'm really looking forward for, for listening to this and considering and, uh, I think, uh, 90% of people draft links at this point. That's just a, that's.
Well, another thing, I, I, I was in the meeting also, I, I can see a lot of people, a few people that did want to be interfered with, but I, I can see, um, I, I think there are people around the lake, um, understand they have a duty. Okay. I, I think a lot of them feel that, you know, number one, they can't enjoy the lake if there's bacteria in the lake. And like Charlie said, you know, I, I was present with the D E S issue when they take off, you know, Glenn and I had fights about it. But at the end of the day, it's, it's worked out really well. And I think, you know, it gave me a sense of I have a duty to Crystal Lake to take care of it whenever I can. And, you know, that, even my wife, they're trying to figure out how we could reduce the water coming off of boys' camp that comes down to our property. And last year, they took sandbars down at the bottom. So, you know, we're looking at ways maybe to kind of slow it down or keep the stuff coming off of, of the boys' camp, okay, a lake. And I, I think a lot of people around the lake would go for, uh, this whole septic. And I, I, I agree 100%. It's a health issue. And I read probably the same article, you know, it's obvious.
It's also an economic issue, not only for the, our town, but we get a lot of calls and inquiries and people that we, about the lake. And some of us were last, we had a cyanobacteria bloom. I got a call from someone who was going to be renting, uh, want, thinking about renting on the lake and asked if we had ever had cyanobacteria. And I said, is that, I don't want to say no, but maybe you don't want to rent on the lake. So it's, it's many words.
Just, um, supporting, um, the idea, um, that you had said about grant funding. Um, you know, obviously this is an important conference. I don't have to know any stuff that people already said. But I think if a person, he doesn't have a property on the lake, if I had a septic, I'm not town law or sewer, so this matters. But if I had a septic that failed and I had to pay privately for that, but somehow the town was helping out the people, it wasn't grant funding. Somehow the town is helping out people with their taxes for repairing their septic system, even to benefit the lake. If I have a private septic system and I needed to pay for that, I would want that from the town here. And I don't think the town can afford without grant funding. It'd be, it's a, it's a tricky road to go down. So, you know, just be aware of that.
As I say, there are options for the town to do that. There always has been. It's not a new program. We have it now. But there's a lot of strings with it. It's, it's kind of a latch, dip, latch inch resort for us to actually pay for something.
And to clarify would be town would recoup any costs by increasing their tax bill. So they would pay a fat.
Yeah. Now, because is the town floating costs? Where does the town get the money?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. Where, where does the loan come from?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there other comments?
Can I just suggest? So, I like Sunape's rules. I think we could adopt, adapt them to be ours in the first instance and get a health order off the ground relatively quickly. And then that would give us some time to go through the proposals and the other steps to augment the, this initial step. Uh, my only thing is I noticed that Sunape's rules don't really have any teeth. It's like you have to do it, but there's no punishment. So I think, I hate to say it, but it's the carrot and the stick, right? So if there's, there's no stick, you're, some people just aren't going to do it, right? You're like, oh, that's bad. Put out your hand. We're going to slap you. Um, so I think getting it on the books and getting people notified and then looking at a way to give it teeth. And maybe the teeth has got to be tab eating. I'm thinking usually, yeah, like.
We can look into that. I think there's.
Then we write their septic hit ticket. I don't know. I just, I want to see it have, I want to see it have teeth. I think this is too serious to not have teeth.
I think everybody in that meeting would agree with you. You said, they all want it to have teeth.
It's time, fast time.
Just a process here, able to turn around a, a, a public hearing, um, regarding the larval proposal, um, two weeks, um, in terms of getting publicity for this and, and building support, um, something like that for a, those rules as well would be informative as well as generating some support, considerable support, I would expect.
Yeah, no, we would, I, I think that this would take a little more than two weeks.
I know. I'm not, I'm not saying.
But yes, but yes, we would have a, well, assuming it happens this year, we would have a public hearing before adopting a health order. Uh, yeah. So I, unless there's other discussion from the board, I think pursuing, using Sunape's as a, a template.
But I do also, I, I agree with Kate that, uh, there have to be some consequences.
Yep. Yep. Looking at that. And then also.
It says that once your system's down, major, you're not going to be able to.
So there's a proposed septic rules, which is there's their, I'm gonna think if I, I.
Yeah, there's the septic regulations. There's like four pages of what they were kind of talking through the.
Right.
Yeah, I.
We can definitely look through that. There are. I think there should be, if your septic system fails, because once that happens, it's too late.
Well, I think the hundred dollars a month is not like.
Well, yeah, rather than getting into the, rather than getting into the details of what Sunape did now, they do have a good outline. They seem to be having good results. It's a good place to start. Uh, and of course, as always, we should probably call them and say, what's worked, what hasn't.
We've talked about something and I've already been talking with their chairman and we'll talk about the administrative part of it and all that and what's working, what's happening.
And we would want to understand the administrative cost as well, know that as well as we can upfront.
Is that too crazy to go to drafts for my guys?
Next meeting might be pushing.
Yeah, I like to push things. I just figured I'd ask.
I just mentioned that Shirley, myself and Martha from, uh, the basketball, I sat down with Kirk Bishop and Stuart Rare at the meeting last week at New Hampshire Lakes. They're the co-chairs of the watershed, like some of the protective, uh, association. They were fantastic. Um, and they said they are at our disposal, help us. Anything that we want to ask them, people they learn, that sort of things.
Is there anything else that folks would like to say on that topic before we move on?
Long-term stormwater utility.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The stormwater utility. I guess my view there is that.
Put a pin in it, but.
Well, no, but it's, that's a well worthwhile, long-term project to have going on. It's definitely not, that's complicated.
Uh huh.
Uh, but it's only going, that need is only going to increase. Uh, so I do think we should have that sort of, the slow burner in the background. What others?
Uh, we're working on getting the, the lake spot community on right now, which means that the percentage of the lake community needs to, uh, given the lake spot program, where someone comes and looks at your property and advises you on what needs to be done, if, if anything, that most do. And, uh, they will help you with that. And so that hopefully will help stormwater run on, on the shoreline.
Do they offer that to folks who aren't on the shoreline? Like I think about my, where I live on Maple Street, I back up to the stream, which obviously flows directly into the lake. Uh, so you know, if I paved my whole backyard, it would just shove everything into the lake. Uh, do they offer that sort of comment to folks who aren't necessarily directly on the lake?
No, because it's, uh, the whole, you know, watershed.
Yeah. So that's available to everybody. Yeah, that's good to know.
In fact, uh, I included, uh, all properties from, that go from the lake up to Boise and low, we should actually go further near those people.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, it's a good long-term project. It sounds like conservation's interested. I mean, certainly the planning board should be.
I think those are what we learned personally on the next year or so is.
Yeah.
What are some education and things we can get out? Is there some zoning rules we can put in place to?
Yeah.
To help future development, those types of things. I think that's that low hanging fruit on the stormwater side.
Yeah.
We'll keep working on the town to figure out ways to slow the stormwater down in inches and add new some things a little bit differently. But, um, I do think it's a long term.
Yeah.
Plan. So let's get through these first few and then maybe a little look at the utility part of it.
It's been a wonderful and exciting, um, season.
It turns out it's not fun when you, when, and you can't drive up your road.
All right. Unless there are more comments, we will move on. Okay. So next there's the emergency management performance grant, which we've already approved at the beginning of the meeting. And the next is acceptance of $500 community nurse connection grants.
I'd make a motion that we accept this $500 grant to Enfield Community Nursing. Uh, I'm not.
I'll second that.
Wait, I would say $500 grant, um, that was applied for on behalf of the Enfield Community Nursing Committee, um, as a small grant offered by Community Nurse Connection. And do you need any authorization? That's it. Okay. With thanks.
And John seconded?
I will still second that.
Thanks, John. That's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you to Community Nurse Connection. That program continues to self-fund at this point. Excellent.
You might mention to everybody, because they didn't get to see it, but we got our first report, right?
Yay.
Yes, or I guess I'll say so much. So, um, so far, uh, in the last, this is probably only through May at the most. They've had seven clients, 39 encounters and interventions for 10 or 12 different, um, aspects. So that's available if anybody would like to, to see the, the very beginnings of that program. All right. Uh, tax dealing waivers. I'm trying to double check. These are both of them.
Yes.
Yeah.
I recommend that, uh, the select board waive taking both of these. Um, they are both mobile homes in the Lakeside Co-op. And I have been presented with a case summary that they are right now in probate. Talking with our attorney today, he said nothing, nothing legally says you can't take them, but it's going to be extremely messy if we don't have the person in charge to communicate with and all of those things. So he recommends that we waive taking these two properties this year and look at maybe taking them next year. Um, both of them do have a small amount on the two properties together. It's what? About $700 total. So it's not a, a huge, huge tax bill at the time.
Even property, is it just the mobile home itself?
Just the mobile.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Yeah, we don't want those.
Yes. Right. And, and it's, and just, as you said, it's only for this year. If something were to change in the next year, we could make a different decision.
We could make a decision at any time, but there's a long drawn out notification process and we'll work on it. I have been working with Lakeside Cooperative, as we did last time with a few modifications to it, that when we do take these, I want an agreement in hand that they'll buy them from us for a dollar and gladly have on taking. So pretty much we'll get out from under our taxes that are due and they can get out from under their large back rent that's due. And they can put new, new mobile homes on the property and get them forward.
Yeah, because their rent's over $500 a month. So they're losing big time, right?
They're losing a lot more than we ever have. But I talked to them today and they understood us waiving at this time and.
Okay. So is there actually required? Do we have to formally do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not very good at making motions.
I would entertain a motion to waive the tax deeds for four and six Briley Drive. I move that we waive the tax deeds for four Briley Drive map 14, lot 11 dash 44, and six Briley Drive map 14, lot 11 dash 45.
Second.
And is that me, Eugene? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Then there is, uh, the Island for the Upper Valley Snow Sports. That's.
It'll be in your sign back.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, I just, that's a greeting always decided two or three meetings ago. And then, uh, the Veterans Tax Credit, which, um, had already commented on that, they've gone back to the individual. The individual has not responded. The way they completed their paperwork, they do not qualify based on the state RSA's. Um, so we are hoping to hear from them. Uh, but I don't think any actions required tonight.
No, I would say at the next meeting if we haven't, we just.
Give them every opportunity, uh, to complete the paperwork. And we can always, if they then, a lot of different applications, we can always make a decision when they do that.
This Northern New England Telephone Run. I'm sorry, that's us news line. I'm totally.
And then the last is Property Tax Baitments. You have to do these individually? We do them as a slate.
I don't think they can do them as a slate.
Yes. Let's, um. Okay. So we have Northern Telephone, Northern New England Telephone Company. That's a big one. We have Jude and Valerie DuTeal at Forty Well Streets. We have Gina Steve Patton on Livingston Lodge Road and Dale and Carrie Lervie at 104 Palmer Road.
and Dale and Carrie Larrabee at 104 Palmer Road. I personally do not see any problems with Julie's recommendations, but is there a discussion from the board?
These are also the recommendations of the assessor, correct?
Yeah, I would say.
Yes, the assessor, okay, the assessor. Yeah, okay, the assessor's recommendations. Any any problem with picking? So can we do one or do we have to do four motions?
We do one motion and.
And just name the property members.
Yeah, I would do it that way.
Yeah, okay. I move that we accept the assessor's recommendation for the following uh property abatements. Northern New England Telephone Company, Duke and Valerie Duteal, Jean and Steve Patton, Dale and Carrie Larrabee.
I would add to those the map and lot number.
Oh.
So I can get those to her, but Northern New England Company.
All right, New England. Managed to lose it now. Anyway, Dale and Carrie Larrabee was map nine dash 70 dash two Gina Steve Patton was map 34 dash 103 dash one. Jude and Valerie Duteal was map 31 dash 46. New England Telephone, 17 Main Street, 34 dash 035.
You have a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seventy is the one across from you that's next to the town hall.
Next sip.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
But it's that property. Kate is the formal owner of that.
Quite a disagreement.
I think it's more than just the building. I think they have a lot of stuff that goes along with that. Because they get, they get taxed for.
Fine, so they should be denied.
Yeah, that building cannot worth over $90, I can tell you that. So it's the telephone poles and all the stuff they're out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
And the right of way.
That's the request for a big one DGNI, as it appears the assessment is reasonable.
Um, well, so they're claiming zero value in one instance. Um, but so the assessment, the new assessment would be 1,119,903 where the current assessment is 1, 2, 4, 8, 800.
Right, so the second she thinks it should be the higher one.
The difference is the valuation.
Yeah, you're accepting their recommendation.
We were accepting the recommendation, so this one's being denied.
Accepting current recommendations.
The assessor's recommendation. And he and the assessor recommended the request for abatement be denied as it appears the adjustment is reasonable.
Yeah.
So in this case, it's being denied. Right, okay.
It's just a big difference. They're claiming zero.
Everyone wants to pay $0 in taxes.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Okay.
Okay, uh, that gets us to administrative items.
Oh, oh, boy.
And then other business, starting with public comments. Please, sir.
Yeah, about 90, it's almost 90 days ago that I asked the the board to consider electrification of of the town of Enfield as far as making a commitment in the future that we have an electric future and not a fossil fuel future. And, you know, it's really kind of handy that the lakes are green. That's pretty easy to see. Uh, other other causes of climate change and everything affecting our atmosphere are not quite as easy to see. So I'd I'd like to see if we could have an agenda item on the next board meeting that you actually discuss this, maybe move forward, we make a decision and you know, put it all most of the ground that, you know, we'll commit to an electric future. I mean, the the federal government has already said that, hey, any new buildings, no fossil fuels. Any major renovations, no fossil fuels.
So do you have a suggestion of what that would look like?
Sure, we just, you make, you make a statement that, hey, that the this date forward, any town building or whatever, it's not going to be fossil fuel, fuel.
We'll take that under consideration.
Okay, and and the second thing I'd like to do is have an agenda item again that any purchase over $5,000 needs needs to have have uh we need to do our homework on it to find out what the long term cost is. I mean, we, you know, five years ago, I did that with the M back committee and it fell on deaf ears. We don't have that one now. Anything going forward, we need to discuss whether, you know, just because we buy something cheap doesn't necessarily guarantee that it really is cheap. Uh, the latest example is we just bought a Dodge Charger, police cruiser. You know, it's probably the most fuel inefficient vehicle out there. So the purchase price, yeah, was probably pretty cheap. While I got out of state contract, that made it really cheap. But yet the operating cost over its lifetime are going to be horrendous. And, you know, the Dodge Charger is so bad that without you even knowing it, you paid Tesla $4,500 for that car in the form of carbon credits.
Is that one, is it a hybrid?
No. It's only got 26 cars per gallon, so that's not that much.
I don't think we, we just bought a hybrid.
It's it's okay. I mean, it's it's still fuel inefficient.
Right, but you're telling people we bought a charger and we did it. Are you saying you saw one there and you think it belongs to us?
Well, rather, Ed, why don't you clarify what we just purchased?
Yeah, I'm gonna know what, well, no, we didn't buy a hybrid, but I don't think we own a Dodge Charger.
Right. Like that, that would be unusual to suddenly change car models.
Yeah.
So anyway.
Anyway.
I I I'm going to disagree with you that that we have to do this for any purchase over $5,000.
Also.
I mean, that that's going to suck up so much manpower.
Then make a ten.
I think we.
And a major purchase.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, again, Dartmouth, Dartmouth is buying four Teslas to replace their Explorers. Not because Dartmouth is filthy rich and has has all sorts of donors. They spent two years doing the case study. And sustainability was part of that case study. That's why they did it. You know, there's a, there's a police station in Indiana that has 13 Tesla cruisers. And they claim to save $80,000 a year in operating cost. And they just sold their first cruiser for $17,000. And she stated that with any of their ice vehicle cruisers, they never got over $5,000. So again, it's, we got to get out of the first price.
Because there are also those people who won't buy Tesla for moral reasons.
Yes.
It's 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 not moral, it's funny.
Looking at long term costs is is definitely valuable. Also, I do think that we have people who are doing that and and try to strike about.
They invested in the police cruiser and it doesn't break even.
Right. Uh, so so we do, we do have folks looking at that. Certainly that's part of the capital improvement program group, you know, looks at the overall costs of what they're recommending for purchases and whatnot.
I wanted to say something to what you're saying. We just approved the grant for um police with what happens when it fails? We have to replace it or, you know, it's it's the ongoing thing. It's not the actual beginning. You know, that's a freebie, but to look forward. How much would this cost over the year? I mean, I'd like to hear more of that when we do somebody's thing. Anyway, what it was said. So is it a public time to talk?
Yes, it is. This is public comment. Go ahead, Sheila.
I can listen to. But I wanted, one thing that concerned me was I always, I always read New Hampshire bulletins and municipal association bulletins. And they talk all about the housings and all kinds of things. Laws, RSAs, those kinds of things. Anyway, there was a a headline saying Z Enfield ZVA approved a 200 unit building. And the ZVA did not approve a 200 unit building. They only approved a height adjustment and a one lot um and exemption on having more than one house and a lot. And I just think that's very misleading to all of, you know, whoever it goes out to. And it just puts, I don't know, it gave me a bad taste in my mouth. It kind of stops everything and saying, well, they approved that or, you know, and then people in the town, anybody who lives in it. I just don't like that kind of stuff, misleading. So I don't know how they got it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we can influence headline, but but it's a fair statement. Is it because?
You know, it just go out and how do they know that? They have to pick up minutes or something.
Yeah, or they may well have attended the meetings. I don't know. I I don't know the answer to your question. Yeah.
Could be in the state, who knows? But I'm the same.
Yeah.
It's bothering me a lot since I'm on the ZVA, they never approve.
Right, because you're correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say now.
It's just a question. Um, there was mention of the CBA um appeal meeting tomorrow. Um, it's not on calendar. Is that something that the public can attend but not speak at?
They can attend, it's not a public hearing, so it'll be a meeting whether they ask the public to input it all.
I don't think it's. No, I was told it's going to be next week. And I'm an alternate, so that that's a memo I got, so.
Let's double check that. I heard the eighteen.
Yeah, because that'll upset.
Oh, yeah, so only three of us can sign that. So I waffled on whether I wanted to be one of them. I just did it. Government grants, man.
Yeah, so there's, there's nothing on the calendar for tomorrow, but that doesn't. Oh, that's interesting. Her calendar does show it. Mine does not.
Are you looking at which calendar?
I just went to the town website and.
Well, so we default, it defaults to events.
Oh, I what, I thought it was a meeting. She found that it is on the, Alice found that it is on the calendar for tomorrow.
Hi, Alice.
Seven and I.
I talked a while before I found that out. I'm glad I'm not.
Okay, we're supposed to meet last and then got pushed.
Whoop, wait a minute.
What, hold for tomorrow?
Yeah.
So they have to have a meeting?
It's posted. Is there other? Is there other, so public comments? Any other business before the board tonight? Let's do a print reminder, Shaker Seven, Sunday morning.
Be nice.
Everyone wants to run around the lake. The great events.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm up to.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I didn't check.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.